Hello, everyone, and welcome to FYI Oxbridge, a program about the people, places, and events that are happening here in our town of Oxbridge. I'm your host, Barry Giles, and I'm happy to invite our town manager, Stephen Setti, back to the table to once again discuss the Springtown Meeting, which is coming up May 14th at 7:00 PM at the Valley Chapel, which is located at 1400 Drive here in Oxbridge. Steve, welcome.
Thanks, Barry.
Again, thank you very much for being a repetitive guest on the show.
It's our semi-annual meeting, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely. All right, so today we're going to go over the town warrant in regards to the town meeting coming up again, May 14th. We'll go over all the warrant articles and discussions on that. I would like to remind viewers that if you would like to view the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen hearings, we do have them up on Oxbridge Community Television website, which is oxbridgetv.org. We'll have that graphic up at the end also. So if you need to review any of the discussion that happened during the hearings to get to where we are today, you're more than welcome to go there and view them. We will also have all the information and this particular video on the town website also, so if you need to check out the town warrant, print out the town warrant and so on, and be prepared for town meeting. So, all right, Steve, you ready to dive into this?
Let's do this.
Let's do it. Okay, so as we go through this, Article 1 is Bills of Prior Fiscal Year.
Yeah, the first few articles in the warrant are mostly housekeeping-type articles. This one is, we had some bills that come in after the close of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, and when that happens, and we have to pay those bills subsequently, we have to put them on a town meeting warrant to pay them. Funding sources are identified as to where the money comes from and so forth, but it's just basically catching up and paying those past due bills. That's all it is.
And that's pretty common for town meeting first.
It happens all the time, yeah. There's only maybe a half a dozen of them on this year's warrant. Some are very small, but sometimes they just kind of come in late, or they kind of get lost in the shuffle, and that's what happens.
Okay, great. Article is Supplement FY 2024 Budgets.
Right, and that's where there might be any budgetary shortfalls in the current year budget in order to make sure we end the year on a balanced budget. We need to perhaps reappropriate additional funds or move funds from another area, and that's what this article covers.
Okay. Moving on to Article 3 is, I'm going to mess this up, I always do, Transfer to the OPEB Trust Fund.
Yes. So in the past, we, let's see, back in 2018 or 2019, there was an article on Town Meeting floor to approve the appropriation or direct application of meals tax to OPEB. Our OPEB liability and what OPEB stands for is Other Post-Employment Benefits. And what that is, is the health insurances and a number of other things, retirement-type things that we have to pay for any of our employees who retire with us, and there's an actuarial determination of what that liability is. It's a very significant one, but it's not only for Oxbridges, for every community, you know, probably in the United States. Everyone has it. So you have to have a funding mechanism to pay those eventual bills. What we did was, we were going to apply the meals tax directly to that, set it up that way. What we found out subsequently from Department of Revenue was you need to vote those into another fund, and then from that vote out into fund the OPEB trust. So that's what we're doing here. So this will be the first time you'll see this on the warrant, but you will see it going forward every other year.
Great. Article 4, Transfer to Stabilization Fund.
Right, at this point, we may be passing over that article more because we're not sure if we're going to have free cash certified or not by the meeting. If we do, we'll, you know, perhaps we'll do it now, if not, we'll wait till the fall and just transfer it at that point.
Okay. Let's, let me just pause for a second. Let's talk about the words "free cash."
Yes.
Many, many years, everybody keeps thinking "free, free, free." It's not free cash. What exactly is it?
So free cash is, that's the amount of money that's left over in the budget we don't spend, and you know, and that's where it has been the last few years. It's any additional revenue that comes in that we don't anticipate. Give you some examples, we have, we've had some large building projects in town, you know, Amazon and Medline and things along those lines. What happens is, they'll pay a significant portion or significant fee for building fees. We don't anticipate, we don't budget for what those fees might be, only because if you under-budget, that has a negative effect on revenue, and if you over-budget and you overshoot, it has the same type of negative effect. So what we try to do is budget a historical amount. Palm Royale!
Yeah, I know.
We have, we budget a historical amount for the, for that particular line item, and anything over that would go into what's called as category of free cash.
Right.
And that's all certified by the Department of Revenue. At the end of the year, they take all our, you know, various balance statements and so forth, you know, there's a formula that they put in, and at the end of the day, what ends up happening is whatever's left over, that's what's considered free cash. Now, it also is the amount of money that we don't use with respect to the levy, the levy limit. You know, in past years, that's been a significant amount of money as well, which has helped fund a lot of capital projects that we have ongoing in town as well. This year, it probably won't be as big a number, more because, especially in this budget, all the available dollars are being used, and we'll get into that when we get into the budget, but all those things in general combine to total what's free cash.
Okay, so now we're moving on to Article 5, which is Transfer to Capital Stabilization.
Right, and normally, if we would have transferred it into the stabilization fund, we have a policy, the Board of Selectmen has policies to how much they want to have in there, which is a percentage of what your overall budget is to pay your bills. If, for some reason, something catastrophic or something happened, we wouldn't be able to collect the, you know, taxes and so forth. So we have a certain amount of money in there that helps us pay bills up to a certain period of time, usually about one month's worth of bills. It's about 5% to 8% of what the overall budget is, and that's what we keep in there. Anything over that amount goes into capital stabilization, and that funds all our road projects, you know, school, different building projects, those kinds of things, or, you know, anything that we don't bond, well, comes out of that account. And so whatever would be left over would be transferred. So if we have the transfer for stabilization, the next order of business will treat it capital. If we don't, we'll do both those things in the fall.
Right. Okay, great. And now, the big one.
Yes.
Article 6, which is the FY 2025 Town Budget.
Yeah, town budget this year is going to grow by about 10 and 1/2%. Last year, our total budget was $53,403,43. This year, that amount is going to be $59,39,719, or an increase of about $5.6 million. It's above what our norm is. Normally, we're about half of that as an increase, but this year, there's a couple of things that are putting some strain on the budget. One in particular is the overall education budget for the town now. I know there's been a lot of debate on that budget in the public hearings, and as you mentioned earlier, I encourage people to go back to see, you know, how the back and forth went on that. You know, I understand that our local schools are looking to put the best possible education project available to our students, and that's what our parents expect as well. That portion of the budget is going up by about $3 million, or about 12.24%. Normally, their increase is about half of that, but a couple of things are driving that now. In the past, we've had some federal funds that have come in that help supplement some of the educational initiatives of the district. Those funds are no longer available, so we need to absorb those, or the school district needs to absorb those into their budget, which is kind of contributing to this increase. But the other things that have happened is, we have about a little over $500,000 increase in our regional education as well. That's both Blackstone Valley Tech and Norfolk Agricultural, with the number of students we have going there. That's about $3 million that we pay. We pay $27 million in local education. So between those two things and everything that goes along with that, transportation costs, transportation just in the local district is up about $600,000. So there's a lot of things that are putting a strain on it. I know the school department is working to alleviate those and find other ways to absorb some of those costs or find other ways to pay for those things. Not easy.
No, not at all.
You know, and you would think, well, $30 million is a significant budget, and it is. But, you know, it's what the cost is right now to educate our kids, and we try to do the best we can with it. The rest of the budget, which is all the general government, all the, you know, Health and Human Services, Public Safety, Public Works, cultural stuff, and all the debt and things, and then the other big portion of our budget is employee benefits. That's up about 8 and 1/2%. That all contributes to the overall number of $59,39,719, or that 10 and 1/2% increase. What people see when they go into the budget, I believe we're going to vote the budget, as we have in the past, by function versus each individual department.
Okay.
One of the things in Public Works, you'll see, Care and Condition of Roads is now in the Public Works budget. We had a little debate on that as to whether or not it should be a standalone article, as it has been in the past. Our new town accountant suggested it be part of the budget as an operational cost. Very well, next year, we could make it its own separate article. And I think there's two schools of thought on that, and one is, so that money doesn't go to anything else besides doing necessary roadwork, and we all know, you know, the kind of amount of roadwork that needs to be done, that that work, rather than that be in the budget, so to speak, if it's a separate article, it's almost reserved.
Right.
And I think people may feel a bit more comfortable with that, so based on some feedback, it looks, we may move it back next year. But it is in the budget, that's what's causing an increase in Public Works above what their norm is, and the other thing that we've done is, we've reclassified certain expenses, so that certain things that may have been in, you know, other expenses in the past, you know, stipends, those kinds of things, are back into salary and all that. And what we're trying to do is, and you know, always try to do, is be as transparent as possible with the budget. If people want to see what the line items are, they can go to the town website and see line by line by line the detailed budget. We didn't put it in into this warrant report because it would extend the warrant report by 50 or 60 pages.
Pages, yep.
And it's not something that people probably would look at.
Right.
But that information is available on every one of those categories on the town website. And just from a recommendation point of view, the entire budget was favorably recommended by both the Select Board and the Finance Committee virtually unanimously. In one case, one person voted against the Public Works budget for that one issue that I mentioned, the Care and Condition of Roads being in the budget versus being separate.
Right.
Other than that, they were okay with the budget, and one person voted against what the overall number for the school department budget was, but everything else had favorable action, and that's also included in the warrant report.
Great. Okay, moving on, Article 7 is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund Budgets.
Right, so 7, 8, and 9 are our enterprise funds, and what really, what an enterprise fund is, it's, the budget is funded solely through either the ratepayers in those systems. So in this case, the folks on the sewer enterprise fund, the water is those people who are on, who get town water, and then obviously cable is funded through what people pay, who people still on cable. There's a, you know, there's a fee that the town gets.
Right.
Based on that to fund those. All those, not only does it fund their operational budgets, but also their capital spends. Capital is through retained earnings. So when you see in the motion on any of those three, that it's, you know, to fund salaries, expenses, you know, and with a transfer from retained earnings, that's what all that means. And retained earnings is basically the savings account that those have, and that's their capital funds in most cases.
Right. Okay, so that also includes one enterprise account, like you said, cable access TV.
Right.
Very important to the community.
Yep.
Can you give a plug on that?
No, absolutely. And, you know, we also recognize the fact that, you know, the number of people are kind of cutting the cord from cable.
Right.
And streaming services and so forth. You know, the one thing from a streaming point of view is, people wouldn't be able to see what we're doing here today.
Right.
If it's on streaming, so, you know, the hope is that we still can, you know, we still will, you know, be able to continue to do those things. We've talked, you know, you and I have talked about, you know, if people continue to cut the cord from cable, we want to keep Oxbridge Cable TV, you know, alive and well, and being able to do all the great programming you do, so it could be in the future, this could become a town department.
Right, exactly. So, okay, great. That wraps up those three, so we'll jump right to Article 10, Authorization to Bond Repairs to Blackstone Valley Tech.
Yeah, there's quite a lot of information contained in the warrant report, and in the commentary, even the motion is probably as long a motion as I've ever seen on a town meeting warrant.
Yeah, looking at that.
But basically, what this is, is Blackstone Valley Tech is looking for the town to approve $10 million in additional debt, not to the town of Oxbridge, by the way. It's overall to all the 13 communities, and our portion of that is about, maybe about 10% of that entire million dollars. But it's to do two things. It's to replace some energy-efficient rooftop HVAC units at the school, and also for the cost of a roof reconstruction. So those two things combined, the roof alone is a little over $5 million, $5 and 1/2 million. They're hoping to get a portion of that through Mass School Building Association funds. If we approve this, in the motion, we'll talk about this for that portion, the voters will be asked to approve it with a debt exclusion. So I'm sure at town meeting, there'll be some debate as to whether or not we should just absorb it into the general fund or the operations of the budget or our normal debt versus going to debt exclusion. Debt exclusion requires a second step, which would be to go to a ballot vote, to vote again in favor of the debt exclusion. What we've done is, since town election is a week from town meeting on the 21st, we already have a ballot question on there in anticipation that people may want to see this as a debt exclusion. If at town meeting, it's determined we're going to just absorb it as part of our debt, that vote the following week.
Wouldn't matter.
Right, it's null and void. But if people still say, no, we want it as a debt exclusion, and there'll be explanation as to why it would, you know, why it should be, why it shouldn't, then we'll be ready for the following week to do that.
Great. Okay, moving on to Article 11, something we touched on earlier, School Transportation.
Right, there's been a lot of discussion on this. You know, this is, was a one-time funding request from the school department to fund or to cover the cost of transportation for just athletic and general fund transportation, and to give the schools the opportunity to evaluate whether or not, in the future, you know, fees may need to be assessed for this purpose. I know the school departments had a lot of back and forth discussion on this. I think on their agenda this evening, there's also an item on this. So I'm not sure what route this might take. This, you know, could be something we'll be voting on, this could be something that gets passed over, and then we'll look at funding this in a different way or doing an amended budget at the fall town meeting. It's too late to do any kind of amendment on the budget now because, you know, we've already had public hearings and.
Right.
So I guess a decision will be made by the school committee tonight, so there's probably more to come on this.
Okay. Article 12, Appropriation for the CMR-PC Per-Capita Rate.
Right, so that's Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. That's part of the overall metropolitan planning commissions. There are six or seven of them throughout the Commonwealth. They assist the communities that are part of their organizations with various planning functions. They also, you know, help with putting together the tip, the transportation project list that comes out. They assist the MassDOT and that, and all the communities as well as getting projects on there, in addition to a number of other things. They help us with our Green Communities Grants, MVP Grants in the past and so forth. So they do a lot, quite a lot for us. We're assessed a per-capita rate based on our population. Believe it or not, it's only, it only costs us $4,476.61. But the reason we're passing over this is because we, once again, instead of having a warrant article for it, we put it into the budget of the Land Use and Planning Department.
Okay.
So it's already going to be covered in there, so there's no need for this warrant article.
Okay. Article 13, Capital Purchases.
Yeah, capital is always one that gets a lot of eyes on it. Capital planning has been meeting regularly. I will tell you that every one of these projects that's been moved forward, or that I've moved forward as part of my, the capital plan, has been vetted multiple times by the Capital Planning Committee. What I like about that committee, and I guess even our Finance Committee and others that helped prepare this budget, is obviously, they're all representative of the people in town, and they look at these dollars being spent as if it was their own dollars they were spending on a particular purchase. So, and similar to what we would all do when we're going out and buying whatever, buying a new stove or whatever it might be. You know, we do our research, we, you know, try to evaluate what the best purchase will be. They do this on all these projects as well. We have, you know, quite a cross-section of people with different experiences and so forth. So when you're looking at things from DPW, when there's trucks, you know, from a heavy wheeler to a paving machine to a replacement hot box, some of these folks have great experience with it, know the right questions to ask. And so you can see a number of DPW projects on here, which is majority of what our capital is anyway on a regular basis, a lot of equipment stuff. Couple of things for fire, which is more PPE and police. You see some smaller numbers on there. Some of this is because in order for us to balance the budget and come to a, you know, so we're not, you know, asking for more revenue for something and hoping we get more revenue, we decided to move it into capital because we have a pretty healthy capital stabilization account. These do meet capital, what capital definitions would be. What our plan was this year was to put some of these smaller items into the budget as budget operational capital, so to speak, versus, you know, this portion of capital, we weren't able to do that, so we did move them back over here. The goal going forward is to have those as part of operations going forward. So you can see, there's a number of different things. One of the things that are on here that's different versus the normals, the fire departments, police, school, and DPW, is a request for an appropriation for pickleball, outdoor pickleball courts. I know you have those folks coming in, you know, to do a full presentation on a pickleball proposal. I fully support it. I think they, the folks have done a great job bringing it forward. The question was where we're going to locate the pickleball courts, and we honed in on a site, and it's going to be at the McCluskey School. If you, if people have been to the McCluskey, where the big baseball field is.
Yep.
Right where the parking lot, beyond that, in left field, there's a large area that previously, when the high school was there, had been used as a practice football field.
Yes.
Or even some other things. So there's plenty of space back there. One of the things with pickleball that, you know, and this is why we kind of held off on it for a little while, was, you know, if you locate it in residential areas, throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the country, there's been a lot of legal actions that have been brought because of the noise. It's a constant, you know, it's a wiffle ball against the paddle.
Right.
So it's kind of a constant, you know, click, 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 click.
Right.
And that's been the subject of some legal challenges. Initially, we were looking at the old tennis courts, a couple of tennis courts beyond where the skate park is.
Yes.
What happened there, though, was, to work the site, to get the type of paving trucks and different stuff in there, it just wasn't feasible to get in there. There was no easy way to do it.
Right.
Other than cutting across the fields.
Other fields, right.
And that would have caused problems with being able to play on them, and ruining the fields and so forth. So we decided in the other location, which is, which meets a lot of criteria. It's isolated, so we shouldn't have issues. If we move forward with a renovation of the McCluskey, as we had talked, we'd like to do, as a municipal complex with a senior center and things included, where it would be located would be right outside of where the meal location for seniors would be, sort of easy access, not to, you know, and one of the things I have learned about, from working with the pickleball people, is this isn't just a senior activity.
No. It is one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States right now.
Right.
And it is huge here at Oxbridge High School.
Right.
They teach it in gym class.
Yep.
And the kids are very competitive.
But it's also one of the sports that grandparents, parents, and kids can all play together.
Multi-generational.
Right, so it's kind of, it would be a great addition to the offerings we have in the town of Oxbridge, so, you know, I know there's more discussion to come on it, but.
Sure.
I just want to let everybody know that it is there. And I believe the plan of action for the, for town meeting for this is to do the, I believe it's to do each individual article.
Each line item separately, or?
Right.
Okay.
Or it might be by, again, by category, DPW and so forth. It all depends what town meetings preferences, but I'm sure that'll be determined when we get there.
Yeah, because I see in the commentary here, it's actually broken down by.
Right.
For recommendations, it's broken down by items.
Right, by category. And then, obviously, as you said, you know, we mentioned some of the school things, some of the school things are some safety upgrades, and then some technology upgrades that are needed as well, that would have been part of the general budget, but again, because of the strain, we moved them on.
Okay. All right, we're almost halfway there. Article 14, Borrowing Authorization for Blackstone Water Treatment Plant.
Yeah, I believe you have Ben Sherman coming in tomorrow.
Yes.
And 14, 15 will be handled by Ben.
Okay.
In addition to 18, yeah, in addition to Article 18.
Okay.
So.
We'll let him do that. All right, so in between there, we have Article 16.
Right.
Planning and Design Appropriation for a State Library Construction Program.
Right, if anybody's been over to the Oxbridge Library, they're kind of outgrowing their physical footprint. And also, it's, since it's such an old building, it's not very much, very handicapped accessible. And we need to make sure that we comply with ADA regulations with respect to that. So the goal for the library trustees and the library staff is to look to build a new freestanding library that meets all those criterias. So what they're looking to do is to, and this is part of a matching program that they would need, they need to appropriate up to $150,000 in matching funds for the library for a planning and design grant, to be able to plan out what that library would look like. Now, funding for this is also going to be subject to the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program, so they need to get in the queue for that, just like schools do for the Mass School Building Association. So they're looking to do that either, one of two ways, either to do a, an add-on to the current building, which would mean we need to acquire, excuse me, some property over near the library, which has been difficult to do at this point, but still doesn't mean it may not happen.
Right.
Or to find another location. The other location would be over at McCluskey School, where we talked about a municipal complex, which may mean demolition of one portion of the building where the auditorium was, to create a footprint for the library, to build a freestanding building that would have a connection into the main building through a corridor of some sort. So there's, you know, other meeting space and all that the library can use, but, you know, this is a project, I think, that the town really needs to take a look at. The expansion that they're looking for would be to expand the library, you know, to what the library would look like in 2030 and beyond.
Right.
You know, even up to, maybe even to 2050, which is well beyond many, when many of us will be here. But the existing library was constructed in 1894, and it was, it was designed to serve 3,500 residents. And, you know, we're almost at 15,000.
Yeah.
We're over 15,000.
Well over that.
Right, and we're approaching, we're going to probably get closer to 20,000, so the library's. library's outgrown, you know, really what it's, you know, really what its footprint is, so they're looking to expand.
Okay. All right, Article 17, sale of the Farnham House.
Right, so we have Article 17, and we have Article 19, I'm sorry, Article 20, that kind of go hand in hand. And what Article 17 is, is obviously we have the Farnham House that, you know, people see as they go out Route 16, you know, and kind of see it over on the left-hand side. It's, I guess, the place where a lot of the history of the town, you know, some of the incorporations and things in the town took place. You know, George Washington was there at one point. You know, there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of the town's foundation and history is there. And the building, you know, is still, it's still standing. You know, we've done what we can to maintain the building, but the building does need a lot more work. And it's probably outside the scope of what any of us, you know, have the bandwidth to basically take on. So we're looking to sell the Farnham House to, you know, someone who is well-versed in historic preservation and reconstruction, and, you know, to see the building renovated.
Renovated, yep.
Right, so, you know, the nice thing would be to be able to do it, you know, have somebody, you know, renovate that building so that, you know, come 2027, when it's the town's 300th anniversary, you know, that could be kind of a centerpiece of it, the renovation of it. You know, even though it would be privately owned, I think anything that we would do as far as a sale would mean we would have to, similar to what we did with the old fire station on North Main Street, that someone could buy it, renovate it, but it would still have to maintain its historic character, you know, be, be in a, you know, a museum or some other type thing. You know, it's obviously within the Blackstone Valley Heritage Corridor, which is part of the National Park System. So, you know, maybe it would attract people to it. But it'd be nice to have it in the type of condition so that it perhaps could be opened during the 300th anniversary, and people can go through it and, you know, see some of the history of the town.
Absolutely. Okay. So that was?
That was 17.
17, and you touched base on 18. Ben will be coming in to talk about that. Article 19.
Okay, Article 19 is something that should have been done a number of years ago when the high school was built, and that was a approval of a conservation restriction at 300, you know, 300 Quaker Highway. And it's always been in place. I think there's been a lot of discussion, especially it kind of came up again when there was discussion about an emergency egress from the, from the school back out to Quaker Highway, and, you know, through an area where people currently ride their, you know, ATVs and whatever.
Motorcycles and everything.
Right, and a lot of other things. Well, that's actually a habitat for a particular, you know, species of, and, you know, and that conservation restriction, while it should be in place, had, you know, hadn't been formally adopted, and now it has to be, because that was part of the original agreement when the high school, this high school was built. So what we're looking to do is to do that. I believe the Metacomit Land Trust is going to be the people who will, who will hold that restriction. So you may see some changes down in that area, but they're necessary. If not, we'll be in violation of, you know, of this conservation restriction, and some fines and so forth can be forthcoming to the town.
Okay. All right. Article 20, which you just touched base on also, which is the establishment of the celebration.
Is this to open up a special account to do this? Anytime you do a celebration of that magnitude, there is some cost to it. When the 275th was done, I believe, it was about $175,000 is what it cost. What we'd like to do is put some seed money into, to the 300th anniversary celebration. We already have a 300th anniversary committee that was appointed, at least seven of the nine members have been appointed by the Select Board. There's two more members to be appointed, and then whatever subcommittees that come out of that. What happened in, at the 275th, was it was a week-long celebration. So every night leading up to the final, there was a different event going on. I believe that's kind of the same kind of plan for what the 300 would be culminating, you know, on the 27th with a fireworks display. You know, we're kind of ironic that our, you know, 6/27/27 is our anniversary date for the 300th, but that's about a week before 4th of July. So, you know, kind of a combined big fireworks celebration, bands, all kinds of other stuff, hopefully, you know, with other donations and things that come into this, you know, to kind of really ramp this up. It could be a great week's celebration, culminating on that night with, you know, whoever, you know, and whatever going on for the celebration. So we're looking to put $50,000 into this, into this from stabilization, to begin those type things. The other thing is, what people say was, well, you know, we're still three years away.
Right. It takes a long time to plan something that big.
Well, especially parades, because you have to remember, you have to, you have to book parades, you have to book bands early. You know, all require a deposit, because that's their travel costs and everything to get here. Depending on who you want to bring in, you know, you know, the more popular, the band around that time, the, you know, perhaps the higher the cost. But again, as I mentioned earlier, it's right around 4th of July. And you have, you know, the Bristol, Rhode Island, you know, 4th of July parade, and a number of other ones around here that really attract a lot of those similar type bands. So to be able to get them here for this is going to be, you know, be a good get for our, for our committee. So we want to help them, and we want to help them, you know, financially do it as well. I think as time goes on, we'll find that we're going to have other people who will make some large contributions to different things to help fund some of the other events that we, that we're looking at. So I think this is going to be a combination of both public and private funds to put this on. But I think the end product is going to be something everybody's going to really like.
Right. Good. Okay. Article 21, renewal of clause 56 for military service abatement.
Right, so Article 21, 22, 23, and 24, these are general housekeeping-type things that we usually vote every two years. What 56 is, is for anybody who's a member of the Massachusetts National Guard or a reservist who are called to active duty. You know, so during the year that they're on that active duty or on that deployment, there's a reduction for all a part of their real estate taxes. We do that, we vote this every two years. You need to be stationed in a foreign country to get this benefit. But obviously, in recognition of the fact that, you know, those folks are, you know, doing that for us to preserve our freedoms, so that's what we allow here. Some of the other ones are abatements, you know, based on, you know, certain other aspects. Article 22 allows the tax collector to, the treasure collector, on advice of the assessor, to waive any tax less than $25 automatically that's considered uncollectible. And that's based on, you know, the assessor's assessment as well. So it allows us to do that. It's just some basic language. And then the other two are just a, an increase of the, by the cost of living adjustment for those two things. One is for folks who are, who are blind, and the second one is just a other abatement for people who have granted this exemption already. All it is, a caller adjustment. You know, in some cases, it's 70 bucks, maybe, that's the max, but, but it's something we do every two years to keep current with that.
Okay. All right. Article 25, trust fund investment prude investor rule.
Right, we had some great discussion on this with the Board of Selectment at the, Select Board at the last meeting. What this allows now is for the town to invest its funds in more constantly currently have. Currently, there's a list of a certain number of funds that the state says is the only way the town can invest certain of, certain of its funds. It's the same list that every, every community has. What this prude investor rule does is, it allows us with consult, consultation with our financial advisors, to invest in another list of funds. So that list increased from maybe 25 funds to almost 250 in various sectors. But it allows us with, you know, good, you know, good, sound business decisions to invest those funds, to hopefully, you know, increase some of these funds so that more interest is earned on them, so that means more is allowed to be expended for various reasons. Some of these trust funds are set up that there's a, there's a certain amount that's the base amount, or the principal amount, that can't be touched. And so it's everything above that, some of the scholarship funds, some of the other things. So this allows us a lot more flexibility in how we can invest those funds to help, help them earn some additional funding.
Great. Article 26, Sutton Street Culvert Replacement Authorization.
Right, this, again, probably be discussed by Ben, but very simply what this is, is, you know, on Sutton Street, Sutton Street Culvert is going to be repaired, but in some cases, it may require the town to acquire some easements, temporary or permanent, that we might have to pay a fee for. Right now, I believe they're, they're working on a license with anybody who's affected, so it allows us to, to at least begin the process, to start what needs to be done. And then if it's a formal easement that needs to take place, that will transfer to the easement, and, you know, and that'll all be worked out, you know, using appraisers and everybody else to, you know, give fair market value on those things.
Okay. Article 27, amend town charter, Town Manager, Section 2 Powers and Duties.
Yeah, what this is, is to allow me to have a little bit of flexibility in the organization. So I, right now, have some flexibility in how I want to structure, you know, how things are aligned, basically, with approval of the Select Board. So depending on how I see, or not only me, but anybody in my position sees operation of the town, how it might align, and there might be some ways to align it better. You know, we talked in the past about, you know, establishing a human resources department, maybe looking at a finance director, maybe even looking at an assistant town manager. But right now, the two things that we would need to add into this would be a finance director with a job description, and a human resources director. So they'd be, you know, that would change how, you know, who, how the reporting is into those, those people in that department. Currently, the town accountant is, you know, we have a town accountant, a town treasurer collector, an assessor, all part of the finance team. So a finance director would align with those departments under them. All of them still will report to the town manager, so that responsibility doesn't change. And a finance director would still appoint, would appoint, report to the town manager. On the human resources director, it allows us to have, you know, payroll and benefits and everything else aligned to that department as well. I know from speaking to the people that were part of the charter review committee, and they looked at having this position of human resources professional, you know, and I guess there's kind of a debate as to whether or not that would be all encompassing, that would allow for a director position already, or just a generalist, or a specialist, or something like that. This kind of puts a little bit more definition to it, in that, so I'm requesting that those two, those two positions be added in, more for flexibility more than anything.
Great. Okay. Article 28, amend general bylaw, Section 233-1, license and permits.
Yeah, this is, allows us, or by adding three words, and made periodically is the three words, it allows us to provide a list of non-payers of local taxes, fees, assessments, benefit, betterments, or other municipal charges. It allows the tax collector to publish that list on a more frequent basis than once a year. And the reason for that is, the way Massachusetts general law reads is that if you're not current with any of those things, you can be denied a business license, an alcohol license, building permits, and all those kind of things. So in order to keep this up to date and have it a formal, a formal list published on a record, so people even know where they are on that list, this, adding those three words in made periodically, allows the treasure collector to do that.
Great. Article 29, amend general bylaw, Chapter 290, stormwater authority.
Yeah, this, this one is, will change the authority for the management of all our stormwater and, you know, all the updates to the stormwater bylaws and so forth. It'll be with the authority, or the authority will lie within the Conservation Commission, versus where it is constantly currently with the planning board. The feeling is, is conservation deals with this on a more regular basis, in what they do when, you know, people come in front of them for various, various reasons, and that it probably is, is better within their purview. The fact that we also have a full-time conservation agent now, it allows the conservation agent to manage all this on a more regular basis, versus the planning board. You know, the planning board meets only a couple times a month, and they're not, you know, we have part-time planner, you know, that's here only, you know, 19 hours a week, and they can't possibly keep up with this in addition to all the other things they have with all the development going on in town. So this has kind of shifted some of that responsibility.
Okay. And finally, Article 30, it's a citizen's petition to establish a town mission statement.
Yeah, obviously, citizen petitions are just that. It comes from citizens in town who want the, who want to see a change, you know, somewhere in, you know, either a bylaw or something in town government. This was brought forward by a group of citizens that want to establish a mission statement that'd be, you know, a more inclusive-type mission statement, and basically be in line with some of the ideals of what the town, you know, has been expousing. You know, this is really up to them to promote. I don't know if they're going to be here at all to...
I have, I have not heard from anyone, but I will try to reach out to somebody before town meeting, see if they can come on, and we'll discuss that.
Yeah, and it's not something that I'm that well-versed with, because, you know, because as I said, it's coming, coming from a different, a different group, but I'm sure they would have, you know, their reasons why they want to bring it forward.
Right. Did anybody come forward during the FinCon and Board of Selectment meetings to present any?
They did. They were, actually, the very first thing we did prior to getting into the rest of the warrant was, they came forward, so that would be available, so we watched the watch.
Very good. Okay. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, just that this is, this is going to be a long town meeting, and I, so, you know, I, I don't want to discourage people at all from coming. I just want, want to put that out up front. It's possible, if there's a curfew, that the moderator sensed that it could go into the next day. We already have the 15th already reserved, same time at Valley Chapel. The only difference would be that, you know, if it's not the same group that comes from one to the next, you have different groups that'll be voting on different parts of the warrant. I would like to think that we can get through the warrant if everybody does all the things you stated up front. You know, go, you know, review the hearings, take a look at the town website, watch what we've just done here, call my office if you have questions on certain things. You know, try to do as much as we can to become informed. That's the beauty of town meeting, is that the townspeople get to, to vote on how they want to see things go forward. It's a New England tradition, and we're lucky that we still have it. I know it's going to be a challenging year from a budget point of view, and I prepare to address a lot of those things up front at town meeting through the little budget message I normally do prior to town meeting, to try to give everybody an idea of how, you know, how things got to where they are, but also to get an idea of what it might look like in the future as well. The future's still very bright in the town of Exbridge. We still have a lot going on. We have a lot of great people that, that work in this town, and want to make sure that we keep it as, you know, the kind of place that we want people to come, come and live in. And I thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, everything for you do for the town.
Appreciate that.
Thanks for joining me once again, and as you know, always have an open invitation to come on and talk about anything going on in the town. So maybe we can work on something further down the road.
I think we should do something a little, a little bit more regularly, a little bit more permanent, maybe. You know, I know we can't do call-in, but we could probably do something where a series of questions are brought forward, and we can answer them, so that way, you know, a long period of time doesn't go by until people get, get the answers they want.
Right, absolutely. Great. Thanks again, Steve. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you for watching this episode of FYI, Exbridge. Once again, if you want any more information... Once again, if you want any more information, you can obviously go to the town website at oxbridge-ma.gov. All the information is there regarding town meeting, the town warrant, hearings, and so on. If you want to watch some of the hearings of the Finance Committee and Board of Selectment, School Committee, Planning Board, Capital Committee, and so on, those are archived at oxbridgetv.org, the Oxbridge Community Television website. If you have any other information or need any other information, once again, like Steve said, you can contact his office at Town Hall, or you can reach me at Barry, excuse me, B. Giles, G.I.L.A.S., at oxbridgetv-ma.gov, is my email address. Or you can go to the town website, get my information, and feel free to give me a call. Okay. Once again, thank you for watching.